Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, unto temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, the glory, the reward. Amen.
Have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to item D, swearing in of patrol officer Brian Dietrich. Brian, can you go ahead and come up?
We have pictures a little bit. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Joe Mann, welcome. Thank you. Okay, so repeat after me. I say your name.
Hi, Brian Dietrich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
In the charter.
And the charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions of the city of Napoleon.
And the resolutions of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
And perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
And come upon me.
That come upon me.
As a patrolman of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
As a patrolman, as for the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief, you're assistant chief. Oh, there you are. Do you want to say a couple of words, please?
Speaking tonight?
Yes. I assume you have some really good reason why you hired her.
Oh, okay, wow.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, Officer Dietrich comes to us. She's spent some time at Napoleon County, Putnam County. There are two Ps, so my apologies, I'm a bit confused. And she has also spent time here as the assistant dog warden here in Henry County, so some of you may recognize her from that. She has a lot of good qualities. We were able to look at some different aspects, some different personality traits that she had, and we just knew that she'd be a great addition to our team here. And she's a hard charger. She's ready to get out there and learn what we need from her. And we're excited to get some good work out of her and be a good part of the team. So, we appreciate you coming out tonight. We appreciate you coming out and being part of this. It's a big thing for her and for all of us, and we appreciate you being part of this. So, thanks for being out.
Thank you. If you want, talk us a little bit about yourself. You have fifteen minutes if you want.
Or two.
I was a corporal at the jail in Putnam County. I worked there for about four years, and then throughout the police academy, I ended up going, as the chief said, to the Henry County Sheriff's Office as assistant dog warden.
That's okay. You didn't say anything else? We appreciate what you're doing. This is your signature here. Chief, hard. If you want to walk around this table here.
They're shaking with their head.
Or not. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
Good job, Mr. Leto.
Okay, we'll move on to item E, recognition of select Napoleon Aquatic Center personnel.
Okay, before I call you guys up, I just want to read a little bit what I wrote down, and then think Tony has a pretty good speech for you as well. So, is that enough time to warn you, Tony? So, I think most of us could say that lifeguards are often stereotyped as people being fit, tan, athletic, as well as laid back, distracted, and more interested in socializing and relaxing than actually doing their duties. Fortunately, here in Napoleon, our lifeguards do not fit that stereotype. And the way I would describe our lifeguards is, would be responsible, vigilant, safety focused, and even heroic. Every day, our lifeguards are tasked with the safety of a hundred lives or more. And even though we don't know that this, something's going to happen or when it's going to happen, that's why we count on all of you to be the eyes and the people that are willing to jump in, literally, and help somebody in the time of need. So, unfortunately, this did happen on July 20th of this year, and we have ten of our guards that jumped into action to save someone. And I want to recognize each and every one of you for what you've done. Hopefully, I pronounced all of your names correctly. So, I have Georgia Swiret, Morgan Strock, Cameron Hill, Nick Flowers, Mason Schweitzer, Olivia Snopley, Ginger Dravis, Esther Dotson, Elizabeth Theobald, and Bella Bingham. None of you were laid back, none of you were distracted. You were all doing your job, and like I said before, when the incident came up, you jumped into action. And I appreciate everything you've done, and on behalf of the city, I want to thank all of you. So, with that, come on up. Tony, if you come up as well. Tony, if you can add a couple of words, maybe even as to what happened, maybe even how you, how they're trained for incidents like that, and what you expect out of them.
Well, first of all, I just want to say that, you know, these ladies and gentlemen, and there's several I couldn't attend tonight, and we've got, what, twenty-five on the staff, at least? And they just do a tremendous job. I mean, you know, as a young person, you know, your first job, you know, whatever it ends up being, I would have to say this would be the toughest. Yes, it looks like it'd be easy, you know, you're sitting outside by a pool, you know, getting a suntan, but that's not the case with this pool. This pool is very busy. There's a lot of activity going on, and these young ladies and gentlemen, they come to the pool every day with the thought in their mind that they'll have to save a life. And so, they have that mindset, and you know, there's a lot of things that have to go on, you know, in their mind when those types of situations happen. And we do train. These individuals train every Wednesday night, you know. You know, sometimes maybe it gets a little mundane, but that training is very, very important because, you know, in a situation where they have to act quickly, you know, that constant training, you know, every week is just instilled in their mind. And with that mindset, you know, when somebody is in a dire situation like they were on that night in July, they were able to spring into action, and they all worked together. They all worked together professionally, swiftly, and you know, they were able to assist this person and get them stable until, you know, medical professionals can arrive. And so, that's exactly what happened, and couldn't ask for anything else. And so, they do a great job, and you know, on behalf of myself and the rest of the city, we thank you, brother.
So, we do want to present this. You guys can tell me what this is called, okay? They know how to use it, they may not know what it's called. Tony, hold it here, we can get a picture. Come out, Tony, you can join us up.
One, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two. Thank you.
Any of you have anything to say? You are welcome. You're not forced to, but you get to.
Yep, so I'm Assistant Manager, I'm Addison Schweitzer. I was actually not there that day, I had a prior commitment. And I got a call from the staff, they were like, there's been a save, but there's no doubt in my mind that they knew exactly what to do. We do train every Wednesday, and sometimes people can get frustrated in the community that, oh, we're not open, we're not open, but to us, it's super important. And I, no doubt in my mind, when I got that call, that they knew exactly what to do. They stayed calm, they did exactly what they were supposed to, and that's why I had such a good outcome. So, very proud of my staff, they're amazing, so.
Thank you. Anyone else want to?
I'm George Whiteheart, I am the walking media team. And without my staff there that night, I don't know if I could have done it. And I am so thankful for my managers having those Wednesday nights because I used to think they were so dumb, and I hated being there, I'm going to be honest. It really was like, this is a waste of my time, I could be doing something else right now. But now that I look back, I'm so happy that they had those every Wednesday because it really came in handy that night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Addison Schweitzer. I was filling in as a head guard that day. And I definitely have a different perspective of everything that went on because I was inside, so I take care of the register, a lot needs to be done inside. But I'm very proud of all of our guards that night. Me being the oldest one there with some of the most experience. I think we all handled it very well, and I'm just very grateful and about all the training we have from our managers, so.
Thank you. And thank you again, everyone. Great work, and if you're back next year, obviously, there's some new people that come there, let them know how important those Wednesday trainings are. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
If you're willing to, you're welcome to stay. It's probably another hour or so meeting, or you can wait, it's up to you.
You're free to leave.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Why? Sorry, it's a little different.
That's why I asked.
Yep.
Perfect. Georgia Swiret. Jim. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Item F, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minute shall stand approved for the August 5th, 2024 regular council meeting minutes. Hearing nothing, those will be approved. Item G, citizen communication. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel for anything outside of the agenda items this evening, but for you to come up to the podium, you will need to put your name and address on the piece of paper that's up there, and you will have five minutes to.
Thank you. Hi, most people here, I hope, know me. I'm Yasha Chaverini. I'm dealing with something here at the, Billy, the courts. U.S. Supreme Court has issued a court order for the city of Napoleon to pay me $3,473. And this was issued on June 20th. We've, I've been patient, I was waiting for, to hear back from the city of Napoleon. Here's a certified copy of a few of them here issued by the Supreme Court of the United States of America. I'd like to know what the city of Napoleon intends to do about the outstanding judgment I have against you.
Sir, I appreciate you coming this evening, but unfortunately, we are unable to speak to open legal actions. That would be something.
Pardon me?
So, we won't be speaking about anything pending?
So, are you telling me that you will not pay this court order?
It's not what I said at all.
I'm asking, here, so we understand it. This is a certified copy. It's been certified by the United States Supreme Court ordering the city of Napoleon to pay me this money, and I'm asking, and I'm presenting this for payment. It's been presented to you by your legal counsel, I would hope. Now, this has nothing to do with a lawsuit. This is a separate order from the United States Supreme Court. I think it's pretty clear, it says, Yasha, for the city of Napoleon to pay me $3,471. And that's an order of the court on June 20th. And it was payable on demand. Now, that was presented to you, I assume, and I'm asking you, at the city counsel here, what you intend to do about it.
So, I can answer for that? We've not seen that yet?
Would you please speak up so I can hear you, sir?
We've not seen that yet? I will speak to the attorney representing us in that case.
Well, sir, so that we have no misunderstanding, I will hand you, and hand you numerous copies.
One's probably sufficient, but.
This is certified copy. And if you're telling me that your attorney has not provided that to you, I certainly, as a citizen of Napoleon, to a businessman, concern myself for the adequate counsel that you have received because this was given and certified by the United States Supreme Court. I patiently waited to hear from what your intentions are. And is that the seal of the United States Supreme Court on there?
I don't know that.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to serve five or six of your city counsel members. If I don't hear something from you in the next twenty-four hours, I brought my attorney. I will ask for a writ and hold somebody in contempt of court. I will ask it of the people that I handed to, Mr. Small, you have now been served. Mr. Weitzel, you have now been served. Mr. Harmon, you've been served. I have more copies here. I'd like to serve everybody if it's possible. And I will be asking for somebody to be held in contempt of court. That's all I can do. It's an order of the court, it's certified. It does not say, you know, well, talk to your legal counsel, nothing. This is pretty clear, and I'll read it out loud to you. It is ordered.
Sir, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
You have served.
Ma'am, I got five minutes. Will you take my few minutes and let me read it so everybody understands?
Yes.
It says, it is further ordered that this petitioner, Yasha Chaverini, received from the city of Napoleon $3,473, okay? Cost of what it cost me to file in the U.S. Supreme Court. And underneath it, it says, certified, and it is certified and sealed from the U.S. Supreme Court. Now, I did not want to go get a, ask for the U.S. Marshal to come and order a writ, but I will file after, in twenty-four, I will file tomorrow. If I don't hear somebody by three o'clock tomorrow, I'll contact the U.S. Marshal and ask for a hearing for show cause. Mr. Harmon, you know about show cause.
You have forty-five seconds left.
Thank you.
When, please make sure that you put your name and address on that sheet.
My name and address is right up there.
Perfect, thank you.
Diamond and Gold Jewelers, 120 East, 12, 12 O'Pai Scott Street, Napoleon, Ohio. Everybody knows where I am. What's upsetting to me is, is that you're ignoring a court order. That's what scares me. You're not above the law. The highest court in the nation ordered you to pay me. I would think that somebody would honor that order.
Okay. If there is no other citizen communication, we will go ahead and move on. Sir, please come up to the podium, put your name and address down, and then you'll have five minutes. Great, thank you.
And also state your name and address for us, please.
Yep, Kevin Miller, 1040 Scott Street, Napoleon. The problem, I have a problem with parking, blocking access to my house, and it has to do with the apartment building between my house and Dodd Street. And the lady insignificant, I guess, of what she does, but she's babysitting children, and sometimes the other people at the other apartment do this too. But I have one route to my house is through the alley from Dodd to the back of my house, and it's blocked to Scott on the other side, and people are parking in there, not necessarily for long periods of time, but they're still blocking, blocking my house. Called the, I talked to the city engineer, asked if they put a no parking sign there, Chad Luss, and he said no, that they wouldn't do that, that the police would take care of it. So, I have somebody parking there, I call the police. They come out there, and they recite this code 351 dot 11, which is blocking streets and alleys. There's four subparts to that, that part, that dot 11. Three of them make complete sense, but the one that the police cite is, it says, "The driver of any vehicle may stop temporarily during actual loading or unloading." And basically, my question is, that's so vague, when the police come, they, I go, well, how long can they sit there? Well, that's just a judgment of what temporary is. And then, and I said, well, is it five minutes? Is it ten minutes? Is, what does actual loading and unloading mean? That's not defined in here, and everything else in here is clear as far as what the code says, but this one is just so vague that I can't get any satisfaction out of the police department to enforce what this, what this says, so. So, I'm looking for this, this part C of this to be clarified, to actually give me what, what the driver of any vehicle, I mean, is this meant for deliveries, or is this meant for? I just, I just don't understand, there's no, there's no clarity in it. And I need, I need clarity because basically, the police said, I have to wait. If there's a car parked there, I have to wait till they clear that before I can go to my house. And it's like, I don't have a right to go to my own house without a car. If a car's in my way, I have to wait for them. And if they happen to have a, you know, the way this says, whatever loading and unloading means, if a apartment there is, has a moving van in there, and they're actually loading and unloading, it might be ours. I mean, it's temporary, it's not permanent, but I, just other, other kinds of things like that, or like there was a landscaping company that came in, and they, they just park right in the middle and do their thing, block the alley. And I don't know exactly how, how it needs rewritten, but it needs clarified so that I have a way to have access to my house. So, that's.
Thank you, we will take a look at that. Andy, you have the information there, and Chad, I'm assuming you do as well, you received the call on it? Can you put down a contact number for you as well?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
So, we'll look into that to get a more better understanding to the section code that you're referencing and as well, the location.
Because, yeah, exactly, it's, like I say, it's just written so vague that I can't, they won't, they said, well, call, well, somebody was blocking the alley, so they're not there for ten minutes, but I'm still waiting for ten minutes. Police can't get there in time, but, but I decide, I mean, I thought since, since they're talking about streets and alleys prohibited here, but yet, it's like there's more, they're giving somebody more rights to park there than what I am to access my house.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, item G, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 030-24, an ordinance providing consent. So, we're going to go back. Yeah. We'll go to item H, reports from council committee. The electric committee did not meet on August 12th, 2024 due to the lack of agenda items. The water, sewer, refuse, recycling, and litter committee did not meet on August 12th, 2024 due to the lack of agenda items. The municipal properties, building, land use, and economic development committee did meet on August 12th, 2024. Would you like to, as committee chair?
Yes, we took, we took some time hearing about the program for the safe havens emergency housing, and asked a lot of questions, received a lot of information. The committee did not wish to make a motion to support the particular project, and so, it was left at that.
Thank you. Item four, the parks and recreation committee did not meet earlier tonight due to the lack of agenda items. Now, we will move on to item J, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 030-24, an ordinance providing consent to the director of transportation to complete the resurfacing of sections of State Route 108 in the city of Napoleon. Andy?
Yeah, I described this briefly at the last council meeting when I requested the legislation. Chad is here tonight, and he can speak to it.
We need a motion.
Sorry.
In a second. Sorry. Motion.
I get a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andy.
I described this briefly at the last council meeting, and Chad is here this evening to maybe provide some clarity for the piece of legislation.
Yes, last year, I approached the state of Ohio to see about resurfacing Scott Street from approximately LeGrand Street out to County River, which would be our northerly corporation limit. They agreed to work with us and cover the majority of that cost in conjunction with their project paving from our north corp limit to county line. That project is scheduled for fiscal year 2025, which started July 1st of this year. However, to be more precise, it's my understanding they plan to advertise this job this winter and start construction next, late next spring. In order to allow ODOT to work in town, we have to have consent legislation passed. It's a standard form which they actually, I believe this looks different than our normal legislation. They provide us the format, we fill it out, and then take it to council, requesting approval. You may recall, we've done this on other projects such as the paving of State Route 110, South Perry Street, we did it with Scott Street, Mayfair. This is just a standard form they require to be able to work within the city's corporation limits. We do have this project budgeted in the 2024 budget. As an ODOT project, we'll have to put that money into escrow when they go to bid the project. If they do not advertise it this fall, we'll try to put it as a carryover into next year. But we don't know the exact percentage because some things we pay 10%, some things we pay 30%, some things we pay 50%. In general, it usually ends up being about 30% of the total cost of the project inside the corporation limits. So, just request them to take first read on this, and once it passes, we'll send it to ODOT, and then allow the project to proceed sometime after the first of the year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
So, do you have any questions? Michaela, can you call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Doctor Nate?
Yes.
Yes.
Ross? Oh, excuse me. Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Then I'll move on to second read. Item J2, resolution number 031-24, a resolution authorizing the adoption and approval of the Henry County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Yes, thank you. We were approached by the county approximately a year ago in regard to developing this hazard mitigation plan. And each political subdivision within the county took part in the development of the plan. All the villages, the city. I know the, my PD and fire departments, as well as myself, were involved in the plan. And the, the main reason for this plan, obviously, protect the county and develop plans to, develop solutions for natural disaster threats. But in addition to that, and almost as importantly, is we have to have this plan in place in order to be able to access FEMA funds in the event of a natural disaster. So each municipality must pass a piece of legislation adopting the plan. So that's what I'm asking for you to do tonight, is to pass legislation to adopt this plan.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Michaela, can you call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes. Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to second reading.
Thank you.
Item K, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. One, resolution number 02924, a resolution authorizing and directing the finance director of the city of Napoleon to certify and file annual special assessments of the city of Napoleon, Ohio, with the county auditor of Henry County for placement and collection on the 2024 tax duplicates payable in the year of 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
One second.
Second. I'll take this one. There's no changes from the first read. Again, this is just where we assess individuals and for basically mowing yard when it gets too tall. We try to serve them with an invoice and have them pay it prior to going this far. But these are left without being paid. And so our last resort is, is that we assess the landowners for the cost. We do not ask for suspension. We want this to go to third read.
Thank you. Any questions? Michaela, can you call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes. Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you. Then I'll move on. Item L, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. There are none. Item N, good of, good of the city. Discussion and action number one, approval of the power of supply cost adjustment factor for August 2024 as PSCA, three-month averaged factor, .00861 and JV2, .036878.
Yes, this is down somewhat from last month, once again. And I attribute that to all of our assets running efficiently and effectively. Prairie State Coal Plant, Fremont Energy Center Gas Plant, and all of our hydros. It's, obviously, was a good month for those. And other than that, there are no, nothing significant, the numbers.
Thank you. No questions? Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, can you call the roll?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M, good of the city, number two, discussion in action, water and sewer rate review and staff recommendation. Refer to water and sewer refuse and recycling committee.
Yeah, yes, over the last number of months, I've been looking at numbers and reviewing. And now I'm prepared to go before those committees and, and present my findings and discuss future water rates.
Thank you.
Who is the chair for that committee?
It'd be me.
Yes, Ken. Will you assign that to your committee, please?
Sure.
Could we meet at 6:00 PM? Would that work well for you?
6:00 PM, yes.
Okay. There are no other meetings that night that I planned, so.
I'm old and retired. I can go anytime.
Does that need to go to BOPA, too?
Yes, Board of Public Affairs.
Thank you.
And, and in addition, thanks for bringing that up. Water rate review commission, as part of our contracts with Florida, Melinta, and Holgate, written into that contract is they can appoint a member of their community to be part of a water rate review commission. So they will be in attendance. I have sent them a letter of invitation or an email invitation to attend that evening. So they will be in attendance as well.
We will go around the table, and I'll start with Kevin.
Okay, so no, no motion?
No, she can just appoint it to committee.
Okay, super. I'm starting to set the 2025 budget timeframe. And while nothing is set in stone, and we sort of work back from third read, which will be December 16th, if everything goes well, second read, December 2nd, and the first read would be November 18th. So what we're looking at is to, on November 4th, ask the law director to enact, to draw up the legislation for the budgeting process, which is, takes about eight or 10 pieces of legislation. So we would like to have this department budget hearings with council, November 1st and 2nd. We typically do these on a Friday, Saturday. Friday's more of a full day. That's November 1st. The 2nd is a Saturday. Last year, I think we only ran less than three hours on Saturday. So if that works out with the majority of council, or anyone on council, once these dates changed, or if you want to try to do it some other time or do it differently, we're open to suggestions. But if we go by how we've done historically, we'd like to have those set for November 1st and November 2nd. Which would require some that are not fortunate, like Ken Hayes, that is retired, to take the day off work possibly. So if, if you can work that out, let us know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Tom?
The Finance and Budget Committee will not need to meet next Monday, 8:26. There are no, they are, are, there are no new agenda items.
So on Wednesday, school opens again. And this morning, talked with Chief Legg a little bit, and city manager, about the safe routes of school and the new lights that we have on Glenwood for pedestrian crossing. It's, I, I think it's great that we have that, especially with the added people that are gonna be driving their kids to school because of the bus situation and/or people walking. And Chief Legg did clarify some things for me, at least. If somebody does press a button, the light's flashing, and they get across the street, obviously, we need to stop, pause, wait for them to get across. The light's still flashing, nobody's around, we can still proceed through the, you know, past the crosswalk there. I, I've always wondered that myself in other cities and seeing, sometimes there's the lights flashing and nobody's there. I don't know if they just hit the button and ran the other way, like ding dong ditch kind of thing. But so then I'm always thinking, do I need to stop? There's no way there. But the, the main point for bringing this up is just making sure that we're all aware of all the kids going to school coming up, and that we help make sure they get there safe. That's all I have today.
If I may.
Yes.
Take it back on that. I did post a video on our X page and a little bit more explanation on that as well. And I spoke with our SRO, and the school is, or he's gonna bring it up to the school or to put something out on theirs as well, to give a little more explanation to folks.
Great, thank you.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing for me.
A little unexpected, but if I can have two minutes of your time for an executive session for pending litigation.
The only thing I had was good luck to all the community schools that are going back to school this week. And good luck to parents that get some time back. But I'm sure it'll be a rough week for everybody this week, but it'll be exciting for the kids to get back to school and get back into a structure. Okay, item N, executive session, if I could get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, can you call the roll, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Michaela, can you call the roll?
For pending litigation?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Pending litigation, no action taken.
Pending litigation, no action taken. Item O, approved payments of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. And can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.